Good evenings, everybody.
Hey, Brian. Maureen.
Bridget, how was graduation today?
It was really nice. They did a really great job.
That's good. I saw the pictures on Facebook. It looked fun.
Yeah, it was nice. It was quick, 10 minutes. Much nicer than Annie's.
Maureen, your thing is muted.
Got it. I was saying that parade was phenomenal.
That was really fun.
They should do it all the time.
That's what we said, too.
So it was really nice.
Yeah, because Collette was kind of, I don't know if I'm going to do it or not, and she came home just so excited from it. It was really
Oh, gosh.
community involved. It was really nice.
Just all the people, so many people just, you know, I know myself, we just got, you know, rode our bikes out to the campus drive and the kids just looked so happy. It was really fun. Yeah, it was very fun.
Yeah.
Well done. Well done.
Yeah, they really, Dr. Wagner and Mr. Vica, they really did a good job getting, making these kids feel special.
Yeah, yeah, that was great.
They seemed like they did have a lot of fun and they had, we were at 220 in Macbeth. There were a lot of people up and down the street, so it was great to see.
Yeah. Yeah, it was nice.
7:01.
Ready to start, Bill?
Yeah, I'll say. You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I call the Environment, Public Works, Planning, Zoning, and Development Committee to order one item on the Agenda of Ordinance 2024 authorizing installation and reimbursement for sewer flow study meters. I just have a couple of quick questions. Director Costello or Mayor Cooney? The four teams are with Rocky River and the five will be with North Austin. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, now the money, who would we pay the money to?
So it's my understanding that we will pay the Rocky River Waste Water Treatment Plant and they will make a payment to ADS regarding the meters for the whole system, Bay Village and Westlake included.
Okay. You have any input, Director Costello or Mayor Cooney?
Well, I'll say that it was fortuitous that we were able to have these meters and it'll give us amazing data to work with. We're excited to use some newer modeling that has become available to our consulting engineers and it will offer us an efficiency of planning that I don't always get to have in my capacity. So I, A, really appreciate your consideration for the ordinance, but I also look forward to having some data that will be exciting to use and help us plan with. So thank you. I defer to Mayor Cooney for any other comments.
Thank you, Director Costello. Yes, I mean, I agree. It's in a situation like this, the more data you have, the better. A lot of what's going on is going on underneath the ground. It's hard to figure it out what we need to do. We know there's a problem. Certainly in Ward Five, so, you know, there's other problems throughout the city and we, you know, with respect to this study for Rocky River, there's an EPA, you know, something of anticipation or of the EPA ordering things to be done. It's, you know, we want to, again, have efficient modeling when we determine what we need to do. So it's one of those things where it's hard, people don't see what's going on until there's a problem. So, but it's certainly a problem. So again, it's unfortunate in some regards that we already have the infrastructure in place, you know, with respect to the Rocky River Treatment Plant. So they had a few extras.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Bridget.
Um, it says that it would be for four months. When do we think this is going to start?
It started in the second week of April and so we feel that there were some technical glitches that maybe not all the meters were online that second week. So they're anticipating, they've asked us to anticipate the metering to go on through August.
And then how long after that will we get the report?
Well, there'll be a time period that the consulting engineers for the Waste Water Treatment Plant will be using that data. I, I don't have an estimated time for, for their use for the Rocky River Waste Water Treatment Plant. I've talked to our engineers about the data that we would use. They, they asked for three months, you know, a solid three months to get the data into the models and to work with a subcontractor that's going to help them formulate that data into those models and do the analytics. So we're, and that's rushing it a little bit, but they're pretty confident that we could have about a three-month turnaround to start seeing some results.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Bill?
Go ahead. Mayor, in your, in your, on your, your letter, you said you wanted this passed after three reads as an emergency. Would you, would you rather, would you rather have this passed in second reading?
I think we needed to have it to, was it July 1st, Mary Kay, or August 1st with the?
For the clarifiers project. End of July, August 1st.
Okay, so we, if you're inclined, whatever the preference is, you know, we're doing this in conjunction with the Rocky River Treatment Plan and if we have it to them sooner so they can make sure everything's, you know, put together, that'd be fine. But if you want another read, that's, so I understand that as well. I'd like, Mary Kay, do you have?
Well, I would only add that there's another word, resolution coming council's way for a separate project. I thought it was going to be one project, but it's a separate project for the chemically enhanced treatment project to do other infrastructure improvements. So before you is a project to improve the clarifiers that have squeegees and, and weers and, and infrastructure into, in clarifier tanks, this next project for a whole nother part of the treatment and process at the plant. So stay tuned. I'll be getting some legislation to, to Clerk Westbrook's tomorrow with a memo in that regard.
So if you want to do them in conjunction together, that's fine. Because that's at August 1st deadline as well.
That is, that is, it's similar funding source. There, they had been both presented to the EPA and they, they got news that they were nominated for the clarifier tank and just recently more good news that this chemically enhanced treatment portion of the plant was being awarded funding as well.
I remember correctly from a program that was presented to council last year, it's redoing the bridge, the bridge cranes that go, that move above the tank. Is that what this is?
That's the clarifier, correct. Yes, good memory.
Yeah, I mean, pass these together on emergency.
Thank you.
Director Costello, you're comfortable with three readings on this legislation?
It, it is, it is, I am comfortable with the three readings, but if there is a, a interest in moving that into a two-read passage, but it's not necessary. It would just, it would be convenient for the Waste Water Treatment Plant to get that information and wrap up their efforts to report to the funding agency.
Bill? I don't know whether council wanted to consider the journey for recess at the end of the month, but we might want to consider that in the, in the timing of this legislation as well.
Very, very good point, Mike. Any additional comments pertaining to the Order 2024? Okay, at this time, I'm, that we pass ordinance 2024 on second reading as an emergency measure. Ryan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
Greg's not with us, okay.
Bill, did you call me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. Hi, Mike.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, and I want to discuss the, lots of talking about meters and sewers that we, the two letters from administration pertaining to the flooding in Ward Five dated May 29th of this year. If anybody have any comments on it, Director, do you want to say a few words or Mayor, do you want to say a few words to the letters or we're just holding up bans?
So we have talked to a lot of residents. I know Mayor Cooney has been on the front line of speaking with our Ward Four residents. We were out with Council President on May 15th, talking to residents about flooding. So, you know, we've already gone into our promises where we're looking at some of the work that needs to be done, cleaning the 227 pump station. The last time it was done was 2016. It was a $10,000 project. And so we're going to solicit quotes for that work to be done. It, it should be done every other year, not every four years. So we're going to try to move that work up. It's a little more entailed, a little more complicated than what our in-house sewer jet can do. It, it requires a level of expertise that merits contractors' effort. We're also meeting with the Certified Operator of Record, Clarity, to talk about pump station upgrades to the pump. While I don't anticipate better pumps being able to handle the amount of water that we had on May 15, that we certainly do have to look at the age of the pumps. They're 10 years old and they're reaching an end-of-life time. So we need to get information together about upgrades for those pumps. And we're already investigating the funding sources. In the beginning of the year, we were looking forward to a District One Integrating Committee application. You've heard of it, referred to as DAPWIC. That's a District One Ohio Public Works application for funds. They're not accepting applications this year, so we are going to be looking at the funding sources before you for the Waste Water Treatment Plant. That's the Drinking Water Assistance Fund and the Water Supply revolving loan account. It's very exciting to talk about the Drinking Water Assistance Fund having a no-interest loan. They're very short-term, five-year, no-interest loans, but they do apply to the planning and design of improvements. So we're, we're very interested in whether or not we can qualify for those funds. So we will keep you updated as we continue to move forward in these events. I'm sure there'll be ongoing discussions with Councilman Minnick. I know that he will keep me in front of these committees to talk about our progress. I have no doubt that Councilman Minnick will help me out in that regard. So I look forward to keeping everyone updated as we move forward.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Any comments, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Minnick. You know, this is a problem, as I've said before, it's a problem. Unfortunately, it's something that can't be fixed as quickly as people would like and as we would like. Prior to the May 15th storm, Mary Kay and I had talked to Michael McKay and Kim Kerber about some things, you know, and we continue to talk to, to them and others about potential solutions. Some of the things that Mary Kay talked about, I think, you know, this legislation that's in front of you for the Rocky River Treatment Plan is a good indication of sources of funds that could help us with planning and engineering, potentially, solutions to this problem. So it's a long-term solution that you have to work on in the short term and that's what we're doing. I've talked to a number of residents who are affected by this. I see them when I'm out, you know, walking in the neighborhood at the store and I understand their frustration. I've had a few people call me who received the letter, you know, and, and, you know, and people have their ideas and theories as to why it's a problem. And I think everybody has, you know, there's some validity to all of that, you know, there's, it's certainly a systemic problem. And we all contribute to the system, so we all have a little bit of responsibility there. And they, you know, we as the city need to, you know, to work on our end of it, you know, from a capacity standpoint, from an infiltration standpoint. So, you know, that's what we're doing. I think there'll be other, you know, there'll be similar legislation coming before you to, to try to address this problem. I appreciate Director Costello's efforts and from a short-term standpoint and looking at, you know, cleaning out the pumps, looking at, you know, upgrades there to help. Again, I think the storm on the 15th was an historic amount of water. There's probably nothing that could have been done that day, unfortunately, but there'll be similar storms ahead that we have to plan for and address. So I appreciate, you know, her efforts in addressing those, again, on a short-term basis. And we're always going to be looking long-term at the solution. So, and I, I know it's not soon enough for some people and that's, that's, I wish it was, but we're going to keep working on it.
Thank you. Any additional comments referring to the? Thank you. At this time, I'll adjourn the Environment, Public Works, Planning, and Development Committee.
All right, then I'll start the Finance Committee. 7:18, 8 PM. We only have to talk about Resolution 2007, the Alternative Tax Budget for 2021. Does anyone have any questions or comments about it? No? All right, then I'd like to make a motion that this be put on third week in final passage. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I say yes. So it'll pass six to zero. That's all the Finance Committee had.
Okay, thanks, everybody. You have Boards and Commissions reports, Ryan?
Nothing today.
Thank you. Bill?
Nothing, Mike.
Sarah?
Nothing today.
Maureen?
Nothing.
Bridget?
Yep. The Community Council met last week and just two things that came out of it. One, they are not going to do Citizen of the Year this year. It was postponed to fall and then they just decided to cancel it and they'll pick it up again next year. And something that the Green Team was doing, which I liked, they're putting signs next to the sewers that will state Lake Erie starts here, so don't dump anything in the sewers. So that might help out if anyone's dumping in our sewers. And that's all.
Thank you. Okay, round table. Ryan, do you have anything?
I have a quick question. It's probably for you, Mayor Cooney. I had a volunteer for Meals on Wheels reach out and they were just curious about when City Hall will open up, you know, maybe back to full-time to use like the kitchen and things like that, or even just to come in and say hi and, you know, do those types of things.
Not sure where, you know, it's, but similar to the 10-person role. Looking at that, I know that there was temporarily, Meals on Wheels was going to be operated out of the New Hope Church.
That's what she said. Yeah, that's where they are right now.
So, you know, they've, they've called us a couple of times. You know, and we, you know, I don't have an answer for them. I know they want to get back here, but I, I can't. But we're still serving the meals to most of the folks that they were delivering to, but once we do open up, we'll be in contact with them.
Sure.
And, well, sure.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Bill?
Nothing, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Similarly, Mayor Cooney, I wanted to ask, I've gotten a lot of questions regarding splash grounds and when the majority of the rec center will open. I know we've got part of it opening on the 15th. Playgrounds, do we have an understanding as to when or if some of these things might open? I know the state is allowing playgrounds to open as of the 10th or as the 12th. I forget which date it is. Do we have a plan for any of that?
Playgrounds, pretty soon. I'm not, I don't think we, you know, that was just last week that they opened those up. We're working in the parks now and, you know, I think in conjunction and opening up the parks, we want to have the restrooms ready to go. So that, that's, you know, that's something, you know, once they're ready to go, the restrooms, we can, you know, have the parks, you know, open. On the splash parks, no, no timeline on that. You know, we're going to see how we do on the 15th with the fitness floor and move on to other, other parts of the building. So no, no, no definite timeframes at this point in time.
Thank you. I recognize that it's a lot harder than just saying, please stay six feet away from each other. I'm just looking for an update and I really do appreciate that. My fingers are crossed for next Monday at the rec center.
Yeah, well, me too, but I'll talk about that in a few minutes once your round table's over, if that's all right.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Maureen.
Yes, well, Mayor Cooney, this would be probably for you or Director Costello. When you mentioned the restrooms, I remember back in February, I talked to Monica Rossiter regarding a new bathroom facility in Bain Park. And she at the time had shared with me that we, in fact, were awarded a grant that would help with putting in a new restroom facility there. And she showed me some preliminary plans. I didn't know where that stood.
That's, I believe, next year, correct, Mary Kay? That's, we were doing some engineering work on it this year for an installation next year.
Right, right. We, we anticipate some engineering because we're moving the location, as you might recall. So we need to change a little bit of the plumbing and, so that engineering, we hope to finish this year and have a very early bid for the project in 2021.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then also, probably just to mention, Mary Kay acted very promptly, and this is just to inform any other of the council people in case someone notices this, on Mastic Road, because of the work on the Mastic Road Hill, trucks are able to travel down there. And one of the, a couple, Mr. and Mrs. So To, they saw trucks going down that had a lot of debris and rocks in there in the back that were bouncing along and, and it alarmed them that this potentially could hit a car that's behind them or next to them. And, you know, because this typically doesn't have that truck traffic, but they are allowed to. Mary Kay did inform them to call the police if you see this, but just if anyone else sees this traffic or sees these trucks and they aren't properly covered, to make sure, you know, it's made known to the police. And Mary Kay, did you talk to the contractors at all by any chance?
I just left a message. I haven't had a one-on-one conversation with him yet, but I'm, he's been very responsive so far. I anticipate a phone call tomorrow with him.
Okay, yeah, that would be kind of scary if some rock came flying, so.
Well, it is bad for their insurance as well, so I'm sure they want to hear about it so that they can put a stop to it as well.
Absolutely. Well, thank you and thanks for the quick response to them. And then lastly, I know we got an email today with regard to the May Rita advancement. I don't know if this would be Mayor or Greg single. I didn't know if the comparison, hello? Okay, sorry. If the comparison, if you would say, was it better or worse than anticipated? Mayor, or I don't know if Greg is on the line?
Well, Greg is on the line. I, I do know that when Greg talked to somebody from Rita, he said, oh, you guys didn't do too bad. Hers was only down 28% compared to the 30% to 40% some other municipalities. So I guess that's good news.
Yeah, okay. That's what I wasn't sure.
But, but I, I don't think, and Greg could be, he would have a better sense of the specific figures, but I don't think we had a real, it'll be because of the nature of all this, we really didn't have a specific number in mind. You know, there's a range of, I think, three to six months, you know, six to 12 months as to what the collections will be. But Greg, I don't know if you, if there was anything more specific that Rita had predicted for us in May?
No, Mayor, this, it's, Maureen, it's really just hard to tell right now. hard to tell right now. My, as I told you a few times already, my main concern is in the individual piece. And we'll get a, a good feel for that come probably a little bit after July 15th, once we get the filing day and see, you know, how far we're behind at that time. Withholdings down a little bit, that tells me that's going to be, you know, income tax that's lost. And, and that profit tax is down, which we, we expected that. But that really key piece is the, and the individual component to see how that section is being impacted. And right, right now it's significantly down, but that's to be expected because of the filing deadline not occurring until July, July 15. So we'll hopefully get the reconciliation for May at the end of this week. We'll report that back to council. If it's not at the end of this week, it'll be early next week. So I'm just kind of waiting, waiting to see him. But hopefully the, hopefully the withholding doesn't drop much more than it, than it has. And that'll tell us that, you know, people are still working. You know, I drive by McGowan every day. It appears that, you know, people there, I was just telling that, telling the mayor today that it appears still that their parking lot's empty, only a few cars out there. The medical building next door, I noticed that one's filled back up, so those people are back, back working there. But McGowan appears to still be working, their people from home, the majority of their people from home. So we'll just continue to keep reporting it as, as, as we get the information. And if, whatever information we get from Rita, we'll, we'll report back as well. But right now we're kind of going to wait and see and, and see where these collections come in and assess from there.
Thank you. And then, then lastly, I know Liz sent out something from the Ohio Muni League about registering for federal funding through the CARES Act, through Senate Bill 310. What would this funding be directed towards? Do you know? If we applied for it, what, what is it exactly?
Well, it's to reimburse us for expenditures that we incurred that were not budgeted prior, I think, March 27th. I think that's the date sometime in March. We've, as I think I told council before, when this started, we had, you know, we've been tracking expenditures, COVID-related expenditures on our requisition forms. So, you know, in anticipation of a potential reimbursement from the federal government also to, for budgeting purposes going forward. So the, these funds would be to reimburse us for for those type of expenditures that were related to COVID crisis. Most municipalities, I think, are, they don't have, you know, the, the biggest problem they have is relating to their lost revenue, the tax revenue. You know, a lot of places have not, you know, they've incurred expenses, but certainly not to the level it appears we could be reimbursed. I talked to Greg and we're looking at what we've expended. We're also looking at ways to, you know, there's been some direction from Treasury about whatever, what are expenditures that can be reimbursed. So we're, some of those, you know, we're going to look for other, for additional reimbursement opportunities. So we don't have a real hard number at this point in time, but that's what that's relating to. Greg, if you had anything else you wanted to add on that?
No, just really just cleaning supplies mainly. Looks like we might be able to use it for safety forces as well. Mayor and I talked about that earlier today in hopes that we can get some more information to see, you know, how much it applies to safety forces. But, and then we're still waiting to see. I don't know, Mayor, you haven't seen yet how much we're actually going to or eligible to receive. I haven't seen anything yet from the county or the state, so.
No, I haven't, no. We, we were going to be introducing that legislation up to, to Liz later sometime tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Maureen. Bridget?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First of all, do we ever get a final police or AFS CME contract?
No, we're, as Greg alluded to earlier, we're kind of waiting based on the numbers, you know, the tax numbers. So most of the issues, if not all of them are agreed to, except for the wage, potential wage increase.
Okay, and then you might be addressing this, Mayor, in your comments coming up. But I have two questions about the rec center. One, looking over, it looks like the, the contract for Mary Long, the extension expired May 15th. So I was just wondering what we're doing with that. And when, with the rec center opening, I was wondering who you were bringing back to work? If you were bringing back all the full-time employees that were furloughed from the rec center? So if you could just address those in your remarks about the, about the rec center, that would be great.
Okay. Do you want it now or do you want?
No, you can right now.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so a very long, I, we haven't talked about, you know, extending her interim status. The rec center, all of the full-time employees, there's four full-time employees who are coming back. There will be some part-time employees that'll also be coming back. There's some individuals in the Service Department who took voluntary layoffs, who want to continue with those voluntary layoffs. And then they're all, you know, we had, it's talked to, asked me when we entered, you know, when we had this layoff, when we had the layoffs and we had a layoff agreement that if we were going to be bringing back part-time employees, that they, full-time employees would have an opportunity to come back if they wanted. I think three or four of them again want to, they, for various different reasons, are going to continue their layoffs. And then a couple of the service workers who are laid off, they will be coming back. So it's most, all of the full-time employees at the rec center will be back and then some part-timers.
Can Mary Long still work since her extension expired May 15? How is she still? I don't know how that works. Do we have to have a different resolution? So, because she's extending it again, or is she fine even though?
Greg, we wouldn't need a, an extension on that?
I would say we do, yes.
Okay.
Council.
Okay. We'll get something up to you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Liz?
Um, just, you guys all know that hydrant flushing begins on Wednesday, so I don't know if you guys want to announce that or anything. Hopefully everyone has filed their personal finance statement. It's due July 15th, so I've got one more month of me getting on your nerves about that. But that's all I have.
Well, thanks for continuing to mention that because you don't want to be late on that.
No, you don't.
All right, Mayor or Director Costello, do you have anything you want to say?
I have a few, a few things, a couple of them we've already touched on, the Gemini and the rec, rec issues. We'll send out an email here in the next couple of days if people are interested in taking a tour of the Gemini prior to its opening. Do that and see how things are set up. I was there today and I can't thank enough the Service Department for their work and what they've done there. And the spacing, it's, I think, I think, I don't know, probably 90, 95% of our machines will be in use, but they're all socially distanced properly, so we're, we should, from, should be in good shape there. Place looks really, they did a great job cleaning, making some repairs. We were again looking at what we can do with some of the other activities there today. Nothing finalized on that. Talked about Senate Bill 310, or, you know, we'll have that legislation up to you for next week. And I wanted to mention, I know Bridget had brought it up before, the Rust Belt Riders, the, you know, the, the food scraps, we sent that out in our last newsletter. I know you, it was something that you had expressed some interest in. If Kathleen Fan here is, is kind of coordinating that with Rust Belt Riders, if there's some information that you think that might be helpful to her, you know, and with, with that, you can reach out with her, to her. I think we had 25, right, the day after the newsletter out, I think newsletter went out, I think we had 25 people fill out the survey. And I know they had told Kathleen that in Lakewood, I think they had 100,000 pounds of food waste that didn't go to the landfill in one year. So I know, you know, it's a great, for a lot of different reasons, it's a great thing. So we will keep you informed on that. I appreciate Bridget's suggestion. We had a resident who reached out to Kathleen and, you know, you know, with all of what's been going on, it was something that we would have liked to have gotten to sooner, but we're glad we're getting to it and we'll keep you posted on that. And we're, I know there have been some, some inquiries about grass cutting. We're, 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 and, you know, some of it, we're coming upon ourselves. Some of it, we're getting inquiries from neighbors, some of it from you. There is a process that we're, you know, we have to follow and we are going forward. We're keeping a list of these properties. The problem, children, if you will, so that in, you know, and some of them, we know that unfortunately, while we, we have parallel things going on with them, you know, from a citations and possible filings in Rocket River Muni Court, they still may not get to their grass cutting timely. So we'll be ready and keep a closer eye on them going forward. And, you know, it's, so we're just, we're keeping an eye on those. And I know that there's a couple that, you know, and it's frustrating for the neighbors and I'm sorry that you have to field these calls. There is a process and sometimes it's not, you know, it's bureaucratic and it takes a little longer than we all would like. But we are, you know, waltz on top of it. You know, we're coordinating with the Service Department, Mary Kay. And again, we're, we're tracking them now going forward. So we know for this year, the problem properties, in the event that these properties are not transferred, you know, going into next year, we'll, we'll have an eye, an eye on them as well. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Director Costello, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
As I mentioned earlier, next Monday would be the last regularly, regularly scheduled meeting of June. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn for recess. So if y'all want to think, think about what you want to do there. All right?
How long is recess usually?
On July and August.
Okay.
But as I, I, the mayor and I spoke this afternoon and I, and I filled him in a bit about how we usually go about it. If there's any business that comes up during the summer and we need to, you know, reconvene.
Oh, okay.
Do's ask, so.
So we can just meet as needed, basically?
Yes, we can. Now, we didn't, last summer was so busy, I don't think we even moved to adjourn at all. Did we, Bill? I don't think so.
No, we didn't, no.
Yeah, so think about what you want to do and like I told the mayor today, if we need to reconvene, it's easy enough. All right?
If I may, Mike, if you jump in on that, if you don't mind? Yeah, so we, I talked to Mike earlier today and we have a few things that'll be coming up to Liz tomorrow, you know, to, you know, in anticipation that there might have been a recess. And we'll, you know, if we do need to reconvene, if you do vote for the recess, you know, we'll, we'll keep you posted as quickly as we can so you can plan accordingly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, we can adjourn the committee meetings. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.